So I am going to call the Melville School District January 19th, 2023, School Board Meeting to order. If we could all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we are going to do roll call. Scott Hoagrich.
Here.
Jeff Wolman.
Here.
Tori Belkey.
Here.
Peggy Hassler, that's me. Jean Preto.
Here.
Grace Wright.
Here.
Patrick McKelvey.
Present.
And I would also like to introduce our student reps, Jenna Jaber. Did I say that right this time?
Yay.
And Eric Plaster. Did I say that? Alright. So these are our student reps and they, one of them goes to Melville and one of them goes to Oakville and they help us with all of the student information and activities. So, thanks guys. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Communications, tonight we have Beasley and Bierbaum and it looks like a lot of their families. So welcome everybody. Thank you all for coming to see your students get honored in front of the school board. So first up will be Beasley, which is Andrea Dean.
Good evening. I would like to welcome up our Beasley ambassadors and Mrs. Scott, who is the sponsor of Beasley ambassadors. They're going to share with you a little bit about a program they started this year called the Beasley Buddy Program.
Good evening. My name is Aleah Abram. I'm a fifth grade Beasley ambassador. Unfortunately, not all of our members were able to make it tonight, but we are excited to share some of our work we have been doing this school year. Beasley ambassadors is an organization of students who work towards helping their school through leadership and service. One of those rules, goals as a Beasley ambassador is to promote a positive school climate and culture. Beginning this year, the Beasley ambassadors are helping new students coming to our school feel welcome and at home with our Beasley Buddy Program. Ambassadors are paired with new students enrolled throughout the school year to help them learn Beasley's expectations, like our high five values, their way around the school with personal tour and build positive relationship with the Beasley leader. While on tour, a Beasley ambassador buddy explains the ins and outs of Beasley that gets the note student personally to give, give the new student an opportunity to ask about their buddy and the school and is given a welcome card written by their Beasley buddy and welcome goodie bag for their students at home. Throughout the school year, the Beasley ambassador buddy is expected and encouraged to check in their new student buddy to continue to help their new student feel safe and welcome at our school. I like the Beasley Buddy Program because we, you get to know the new student, you get to learn where they came from. I also like to be helpful with the new students because of being part of the Beasley ambassador. Here are some other Beasley ambassadors to share their thoughts and feelings about the Beasley Buddy.
Hello. Hello, my name is Elise. I like, I am in fifth grade ambassadors and I like the Beasley's Buddy Program because it gives a new student someone to trust and talk to. It also gives the buddy and the new student a new friend.
Hello, my name is Ella Dunwald and I'm a fifth grade Beasley ambassador. I like the Beasley Buddy Program because you can meet someone new and show, and show them around the school and teach them the high five expectations.
Hello, my name is Olivia Beezer and I'm a fourth grade Beasley ambassador. I like the Beasley Buddy Program because it helps new students feel more comfortable with their new school and helps new students understand expectations and the rules of their new school.
Hello, my name is Jamie Westbrook and I am a fifth grade Beasley ambassador. I like the Beasley Buddy Program because it really helps new students feel welcome and comfortable at our school so they know that they are safe in their new environment. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share about our Beasley Buddy Program for our new students. We hope to continue this program in years to come. Thank you.
Good job, Beasley. Congratulations on being ambassadors. Next up, we have Bierbaum, Paul Morris, and Nathan Perkins.
Melville Board of Education, thank you for hosting Bierbaum Elementary tonight and allowing us to present and share about some of the things that we are most proud of at Bierbaum. I want to take a brief moment to share about a new adventure that we're embarking on this school year. For the first time, Bierbaum's yearbook will be entirely student-created. Classroom teachers Jennifer Shaefer and Sabrina Houston have sponsored and tasked a group of students with the entire content of our yearbook, including its cover and its photography. I want to specifically recognize the student, Kieran Besik, from our yearbook group. Kieran has done a great job displaying leadership and modeling the positive attributes of a Bierbaum buffalo as he makes his way around the school finding content for our yearbook. Kieran, thank you for modeling the characteristics of a Bierbaum buffalo. Respectful, responsible, positive, and perseverant.
Scott and Jeff. Scott and Jeff. Scott and Jeff.
Alright, that's very cool. I hope you bring a copy of your yearbook to show us sometime. Good job. Okay, next up is MNEA Deanna McKelvey.
Hello, thank you so much again for letting us tell you about some great students. Our students are always chosen by teachers who they feel exemplify their school the best. For Beasley, it's Michaela Abram, so if she could approach the podium with her teacher.
So Michaela Abram is in third grades, is a third grade student at Beasley and Michaela consistently comes to school with a smile on her face, ready to take on a new day. She's friendly to all of her peers and perseveres on all her assignments. She efficiently uses strategies and advocates for herself throughout the school day. She's a great asset to our school.
Our next student is from, um, Bierbaum. There it is. I'm sorry, wasn't on my notes. So if Kylie and her teacher could please approach the podium?
Hello, everyone. My name is Connor Ruzika and I teach fourth grade at Bierbaum Elementary. I not only have the honor of announcing a student of the month, but also have the privilege of having her in my class. Kylie Taylor exemplifies work ethic, dedication, perseverance, respect, creativity, and compassion to make her the perfect role model for students to follow. Due to these traits, Kylie has grown in the areas of reading, writing, math, as well as always being someone her classmates and myself can rely on. Kylie Taylor, so proud of you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation.
Okay, next on the agenda is we have open period for patron comments relating to board agenda items. We do have three people signed up and I'm going to say the rules for all three of them. You have three minutes per person to talk to the board and the board is accountable to the state for protecting the legal rights of the schools, employees, students, parents, and others. Discussion of individuals or specific situations will not be allowed. The board will strictly enforce these rules and speakers will be interrupted if they discuss matters that might violate board rules and policy. First up, we have Laurie Sendell.
So my name is Laurie Sendell and I have two kids at Blades Elementary and this is our first year in the district and they have greatly benefited from having a social emotional teacher. I understand that there is some issues with funding coming up and I think that they deserve to be on the same ballot to increase the teacher salaries. I feel that they have benefit not just to the teachers, to the students and I feel like most people recognize that the pandemic hasn't been easy for anyone, especially kids. If there's a time that they need to benefit from social emotional learning, now would be the time. And the uncertainty of the social emotional teachers not knowing if they're going to have funding to continue is not really fair to them. The uncertainty is uncomfortable for everyone. And from what I understand, there is a teacher shortage. If these social emotional teachers don't know that they at least have the option of letting voters in the district determine if they're valuable enough, they're probably going to start looking elsewhere instead of waiting for, to find out the next year, maybe we'll be able to get more funding, maybe we won't. And so I think that retirees would vote for this. I think that people that don't have kids in the district would vote for this because if there's anything that we can see from the pandemic is that we need conflict resolution. We need kids being able to express themselves. We need teachers being able to focus on teaching and not being able to, not having the time or the resources to deal with the emotional needs of these kids. And even if my kids didn't benefit from this, I know that there are other children that would benefit from this and they're going to go to school, they're going to interact with those kids and they need this help. They need these teachers and I feel that they deserve to be a part of the ballot for improving the salaries of other teachers as well.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And just to let you know how important it is to me, I don't like public speaking at all. I'm super uncomfortable. And it's my husband and I, our date anniversary and we had other plans, but when my kid's social emotional teacher called me and asked to hear, you know, if I could come here and talk to you personally, I said, fine, we'll, we'll do things on another night.
Well, thank you. We feel honored that you came, so we appreciate it. Your advocacy. Next up is some guy named Kevin Schartner.
First thing, I just want to start off by saying that some of the things I'm going to say may seem like they disagree with the woman who just spoke, but I do agree with everything she said. I just think there's going to be some difficult things that you're going to have to go through and, you know, decisions to make. So, good evening, board directors, district administrators, friends. I'd like to start by expressing my appreciation for the work our district has put into researching compensation and asking our community what changes we would support. You've demonstrated a high degree of transparency and fiscal responsibility through this entire process and I thank you for doing that. Getting into my favorite part, the data. The community survey data is showing overwhelming support for all four potential April initiatives. Even more important, our community is expressing, we will pay a little more to provide this support. That's true dedication. The survey also provides some guide rails around how much the community is willing to spend. As you know, you're going to have to make some tough decisions on what to put on this April ballot. The key point is that what doesn't make the list tonight still has community support. Does not have to be thrown out. It's fair to continue evaluating all of these items and to reintroduce them based on the value they bring to students. Teacher and essential worker competitive pay look to be the most pressing needs and they also got the highest survey support. We see the trends in teachers leaving the profession is quickly turning into a crisis. Economic trends are impacting the ability to attract and retain essential support employees. At risk is that we might not have the people required to provide a consistent, safe, and successful school day. It must be said that our teachers have shown incredible loyalty over the years to their students in schools. We know our pay schedules cause us to lose a number of them each year and we can't blame people for choosing to improve their financial security. What we can do is change the equation to ensure they don't have to make that choice. Thankfully, the data shows we are not far from being competitive. Using the four selected comparison districts from an earlier board meeting, teachers look to be about three and a half percent behind the average. From a homeowner perspective, our personal cost is reasonable. The $300,000 home looking to add somewhere around $12 to $14 a month. This seems like a small amount to invest in our community, especially considering that a 1% annual increase in our property values would equate to around an 18% return. The last item I want to touch on is interventionists. We see that interventionists are having a strong, positive impact on our children. Many of us used to talk about increasing interventionists before COVID, especially at our Title I and our high ELL schools. I still believe they are a key to further improving academics in our district and as the woman before me said, the social emotional part. They do not make the list tonight, I would ask that our district continue to collect and communicate information about the benefits our interventionists are bringing and that you look for ways to keep them. Thank you very much for your time, your service, and dedication to our community.
Thank you. Okay, next up, and I'm going to butcher your last name, I'm afraid, Amy Kancewicz?
That was really close.
Alright. Thank you, sorry.
No worries. Good evening, everyone. My name's Amy Kancewicz. I am the Network Director of Behavioral Health for SSM and the parent of two elementary school children in the Melville School District. I'm here tonight to echo the previous two speakers and ask that the board seriously consider taking the tax increase to the ballot this year to retain our funded interventionists. As a parent of two children who receive SSD and interventionist services, I cannot express enough how important this role is to our schools, our students, and our community. As a mental health leader in the St. Louis region and across four other states, I can also assure you that we have barely started to uncover the significant effects of COVID on our children's mental health and their development. When the SFR funding expires in 2024, our school district will begin to welcome children into early childhood who due to COVID have missed crucial social, emotional, and developmental opportunities as a result of isolation and socioeconomic difficulties experienced by their families. Our children currently in school will lose dedicated educators who are supporting the overall development of this community's future leaders and next generation. The combination of losing those interventionists and the staffing challenges faced by the school district and SSD will have dire consequences on our students. The other day, my oldest son, he's in third grade, so he started kindergarten when COVID first began, was having a really tough day regulating. He had a bad hockey game in the morning and came home just not able to get it together. And in the midst of the worst part of that dysregulation, he looked at me and said, "Do you know where, I'll call her Jane Doe for her privacy, his interventionist lives? Do you know where she lives?" And I said, "No, why?" "Well, I need you to take care." So in that moment, I realized as a parent that when my child is seeking out someone that he sees daily at school, the amount of love and support that he's getting is seriously impacting his day-to-day functioning. If the board does not take this issue to the ballot this year, the interventionists, both academic and SEL, will be working in schools in April of 2024 with no idea whether or not they have a job in August of that year. Waiting until April means that they, of next, of 2024, means they will miss many months of applying for jobs should that tax increase not go through. Then they potentially have only a few months to retain employment to support their families and with the rising cost of supporting a family, I would assume that that will be a struggle for many of them. We all know that our educators would not be in the schools if not for their dedication and unfaltering support and love of our children and I hope as a community, we can come together to confirm their employment and give them peace of mind, which pales in comparison to what they do for our kids every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is governance, facilities, roof bids, Mike Gag.
Good evening. So we solicited bids for roof replacement for the summer for Oakville High School and Berkeley Middle School. I'd like to move to approve the lowest qualified bid by Beatty Roofing for Oakville High School in the amount of $1,126,853, which includes solar panel removal and replace, permits, professional fees, and contingency. And Frederick Roofing for Berkeley Middle School in the amount of $883,576, which includes panel, solar panel removal and place, permits, professional fees, and contingency fees. A grand total of $2,0429. With that said, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so on board docs, eboards, there are questions that have been asked and already answered. Does anybody have any other questions? Nothing? Okay, if I could please get a motion to approve the lowest qual- bid, qualified bid for roofing as outlined by Mike Gag?
So moved.
Second. Sorry.
All in favor?
Grace was the motion, Susan, and I was second. I think, wasn't I? I can't hear.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mike. Alright, next up is Melville High School's servery bid, Katie Gag.
That was a new word for me this week. That's a tongue twister, I know. Basically new serving lines. So I'm here tonight to recommend Belter for our company to replace the serving lines at Melville High School, basically give them a good upgrade, allowing us to do more exciting things for the kids that they're asking for and just improve the overall environment aesthetic. So I would like to do, do we recommend Belter as our bidder for the replacement of serving lines at Melville? Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have anything? And just to be clear, food services is self-funded, so this is all coming out of food service funding. Alright, if I could please get a motion to approve Belter, the lowest qualified bidder for the servery remodel at Melville High School for the total of $296,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Alright, next up is the bus bid, Dan.
Good evening. I would like to replace five full-size buses and the bid I have, it fulfills the obligations is from Central State's Bus in the amount of $603,60724. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have anything beyond what they've already asked? Okay.
Actually, I've got one.
Sure.
I know we've been going through the five bus a year replacement plan. How far are we along with that to get us basically into a starting over scenario for the next set?
We're about half to three quarters of the way through. It's on a 16-year replacement schedule. So it's all, I can supply you the document, what it looks like.
Just curious, so basically around 2030, we'll be going and starting that cycle anew essentially?
Something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion to approve the purchase of the buses as presented, purchasing three type C buses. Purchasing three Type C buses, gas, from Central State's Bus would be $358,189.80. Purchasing two C buses, diesel, from Central State's Bus would be $245,417.44, for a total of $603,607.24.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next up is Health Services, Dr. Adam Smith.
Good evening. It's always a lot of pressure to follow the three shortest agenda items on tonight's meeting, but, so thanks for having me. It's our annual pre-K-12 Health Services Report. So, just kind of looking at who is in our healthroom services and who is providing services to our students, kind of have a long-term history from 2016 to current, but we currently have 22 full-time nurses that are RNs and LPNs. We have one part-time LPN, and we have five healthroom assistants that work in our schools. This is kind of always an interesting piece of data, just the number of students that are seen, and this is from August until December for winter break, starting is what this timeframe is. So, we have the data back from 2017 to current, so visits are always pretty high. They were a little higher pre-pandemic, and then had that sharp drop when we had some of those times when we were connected, but our total visits are still up there. We still dispense a lot of daily medication to students throughout their day if they need to take medicine at school, and we have a lot of visitors. Visitors are always kind of a high point in the healthrooms, and so there's all those pieces. When we look at just the data a little bit more closely, so we've actually had 61,695 visits from August 23rd to December 22nd. Last year, we had 60,367 visits with that same timeframe, so we increased 1,328 visits this school year. And so, what's kind of interesting is if we kind of look at what our school year has been, I got us in a session about 81 days, that's an average of around 762 visits a day in our healthrooms across the school district. If you look at our most prevalent health concerns, and these are reported by newly-enrolled parents as they're filling out the health conditions report as part of new student enrollment, as well as family updates that happen annually for our returning families, this information is gathered in that realm. But ADD, ADHD is 26, 27.6% of our prevalent health conditions, asthma's 22.1, and anxiety's 11.6%. And then we have various of smaller incidences, but other things that are going on with our students that our nurses and health teams are taking care of daily. This year, we were able to do vaccinations. We have a great partnership through Walgreens, they work with our insurance, and so we were able to vaccinate 715 employees and any family dependents that may be on the insurance this fall when we did our partnership with Walgreens. So, that's always a good partnership and excellent work. The last thing I really want to talk about is the professional learning and volunteering that this team does. They're under the leadership of Jennifer Ahern, she's our lead nurse, she's also the full-time RN over at John Kerry. And so, they're very, they're very connected, they're very involved in our local, as well as national associations for healthcare professionals. We also have very robust and very positive local organization. We have the Melville Health Professionals Association that are part of NEA. Jen and part of her team also take care of all the professional learning opportunities on our district days and throughout the year that are needed. Currently, we're working on CPR recertifications for our healthroom assistants right now. And then, last thing is, they also do things regionally. So, here's a picture of the crew volunteering recently at Nurses for Newborns, and they just do a lot of volunteer work, help stock supplies, get things organized, and so they're just a wonderful team. They do a lot of, lot of work on the daily, and couldn't be more proud of all their efforts. So, just wanted to highlight the work of Nurse Ahern and all of her team throughout the school district. Thank you.
All right, does anybody have any questions? I'm just always amazed at the amount of work that are in the visits that they do, so thank you for that report, and we certainly appreciate all of our nurses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, oh, it's you again.
I'm back. So, I also, I also have Ms. Kim Lawson, who is our Director of Special Education. She's our person, but she works for Special School District, but she's our Melville full-time person, so Kim's up here with me to thanks for your time on our special ed report. Again, this is an annual K-12 compliance report that we give to the Board. This report is required by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and also the Missouri State Performance Plan, which targets student performance indicator indicators for special ed compliance. I'm happy to report this year with, with the way DSE has organized and created all their targets, our district is meeting targets. That's really exciting. This is just a look at from 2012 to current, what our staffing has looked like, what our child count has looked like over those timeframes, as well as our special ed incident rate. I would like to point out that this year, for just staffing, we have 102 certified teachers that work with students in Melville School District, we have 86 paraprofessionals, we have 31 related service professionals, that could be occupational therapy, physical therapy, et cetera, could be nurses, we have 31 speech-language pathologists, and we also have six registered behavioral technicians. So, that makes up our 256, and then our administrators are in there, so we have five special ed coordinators, and then we have full-time director with Ms. Lawson. So, a lot of good support from Special School District for our students in the district. This next slide is looking at incident rate. From 2018 to '22, the most recent data is in the gray, that's the most current data, and the next two slides kind of will indicate some things. And so, when we look at our most prevalent disability categories, where students are qualifying in our district, other health impaired, specific learning disability, emotional disturbance, autism, and speech impairment are the top categories of the incident rates in Melville School District right now. This is just a graphical representation of Melville compared to the state of Missouri on all those categories. The next slide is focusing on a percentage of students by race, by total district enrollment, which is that very top line, and then looking at special ed child count and disability categories for our current school district for this 2122 school year. This next slide talks about placement categories, and encites the amount of time that students with disabilities are participating in regular general ed classes. This is one point I think is always a good celebration for our district. 74.5, so really 75% of our students are inside the regular general ed classroom, 80% are more of the school day, and compared to the state, state average is 57%. And so, I think our students really do have access to a least restrictive environment for their education and have access to our general education curriculum, and that's something I think should really highlight of how hard everyone works together to ensure our students are able to participate fully in their education. The next chart talks about suspension expulsions, we don't have any expulsions, data for students with disability, and also students that are non-disabled. These are just rates per hundred, and it just looks at OSS in totality, students that might have exclusion in greater than 10 days, as well as any incidences of in-school suspensions. This next slide's the same sort of data, it just breaks it down a little bit more definitively, this has race and ethnicity included in that category as well for the same file set, same group of kids over, over time. When we look at our graduation rates, last year, in our graduating class, we had 66 students that had, that were, had a disability that were graduating. You can look at that number over the trend. Also, I think one thing to point out is our dropout rate is considerably less, love it to be zero, but it's considerably less than the state's average of 2.3%. Our last year average was 0.7, which did drop from the year before, in 2021, which was 1.4. So, I think we're making some good efforts, but we still need to work, you know, on those pieces and work on that post-secondary piece for students to ensure everyone has the support they need throughout their education. With that, have anything you'd like to ask? Take it.
No? Nothing? Okay. No, just thank you and your team and everybody involved and all the care you guys give these students. Without you, obviously, we wouldn't be here and have such success, and I love seeing the graduation rates, that's awesome. So, thank you.
We have a good partnership, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, not to be outdone, but next up is Marshall Crutcher with Budget Development.
All right, good evening. This is a very easy piece of the budget, so really, all tonight is just talking about the debt. So, the schedules that are shown there really just runs through what debt we have, and really, that's simple. All we have right now is just one general obligation bond. This next year, the budget just goes according to the debt payment schedule, so it'll be a million dollar, or $1.5 million of principal expense and about $1 million of interest expense, and there's other schedules that we show you, the whole history of the GO bond payment schedule. So, it's really pretty straightforward. The biggest thing really to this whole thing is when you see the PropES updates, you're going to see, you know, if you track every month, the interest income from month to month on the PropES funds, you'll see it's jumping up pretty significantly, and that's because we're at like 4.3% interest rates right now. When we started this, we were at 4 one-hundredths of a percent. So, the thing to keep in mind is throughout the, you know, the whole duration of our bond proceeds, we're allowed to make an average of 1.22% during the whole length of the time period of holding the money. When we first started out, we were at 4 one-hundredths of a percent, so we were way under that. Every month, we're earning 4.3% as of now, so that's really eating into and raising that average. So, at some point later this spring or early summer, at these interest rates, we'll get to the point where we've reached that 1.22% average for the current, you know, duration of where we're at right now. We check in with MOSIPS and with our debt underwriter, they'll do calculations, and they'll figure out when we reach that point, but bottom line is, once we get to that, we're going to have to have additional tracking because the interest that we receive, whatever portion is over that 1.22%, we have to pay back. So, you can't, you know, we'll have to figure out how to track the true interest that we get to keep versus what we pay back. So, just keep that in. And that's really all I've got to know.
Okay, does anybody have anything? When you say we have to pay it back, where to the, I don't understand that.
Honestly, I'm not even sure where we have to pay that back to.
Well, I'm glad it was up for something. That might be a dumb question, but if you don't know, I don't know.
And, you know, I've asked DSE some initial questions, and they just say, "Read the manual," and the manual doesn't tell you anything, so I'll be consulting with our auditors and really more likely LJ Hart, who has surely had some experience through the years with this.
I guess, worst case, we put it aside and just figure out what to do with it at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll actually have formal, MOSIPS will formally calculate where we're at, you know, from month to month, once we get to that stage, so we'll all get some kind of a tracking, so we've got a pretty good idea of how much interest we can keep versus how much we cannot. We'll have to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to track that.
Any estimate on when that might be, this calendar year?
Yeah, later this spring or early summer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marshall.
All right, thank you, Marshall. Next up is the Strategic Plan, Effective and Efficient, Dr. Jeff Bressler.
Yes, as you know, we've been updating you throughout each month on components of our strategic plan. This evening, I'm going to give you a brief update on our Effective and Efficient. So, out of our five themes that we've categorized our plan, the Effective and Efficient speaks more to our process, I would say, of the first four, and how we get things done. So, how are we making sure that we're effective and efficient in the four areas that are listed for you? To highlight a few of these strategies, for example, it's sort of listed here, Mr. Crutcher reported the progress on, you know, the focus of our balanced budget was one of our strategies. I'll give you an example of how we're working on alignment, which is that strategic plan and how the strategic plan links to our building improvement plans, which is also then evidenced in our classrooms on a daily basis. Also, some examples of cyclical investments and our progress on stakeholder engagement and, as well as some celebrations. So, essentially, these are the big rocks of Effective and Efficient, these are some of the strategies and how we're making sure that we're keeping things aligned, and then also, you think of a district of our size with 19 schools, what, 10,200 students, 1,800-ish employees, sometimes it feels like you could be going in different directions, right? You know, all of, all of our employees and leadership. So, this is meant to plan to make sure that we have direction, which is how we build that momentum. Essentially, more than 70% as we celebrated, I believe at our last board meeting, our communications department sort of showcased our ongoing stakeholder engagement, so a direct evidence of how we're providing that engagement is through that frequent voter survey that you had the opportunity to review at our last board meeting, in December's board meeting. So, that was what was presented to you. It had four different areas that we were requesting information and feedback from our voters, an exact, exact example of how we're engaging our stakeholders, getting feedback from them before making decisions. Overall satisfaction, this is not new to you. Nearly 80% of our respondents were satisfied with Melville School District, the general public poll with that 75%, and then our parents with the 82% of that satisfaction. That's sort of outlines the graph of where we are in our feedback. Tomorrow's a fun day for us. We are having our January roundtable, so something that we started last year by the efforts of our central office team, and then feedback from our building principals. So, tomorrow is that mid-year point of focus alignment. So, the midpoint of the year as administrative team, we're having monthly learning walks every month in buildings to go over each topic. So, tomorrow, we're going to be meeting with every principal in our district as they do roundtable discussions with areas from our team, which include Dr. DeKemper, Dr. Smith, Mr. Smith, our, our Teaching and Learning Department, our directors, will all be there for the purpose of planning, reflection, and accountability, how are we being effective and efficient. These are just some of the topics I included to share with you. These are the things that we'll have questions for at our roundtables, that our principals will be reporting back to us with that progress. Another great thing, it's easy to celebrate, and Dr. DeKemper will sort of depict some of the things with the implementation. How are we implementing PropES? An example, example of how we're being effective and efficient with our stewardship, our financial stewardship, maintaining our promises to our community. How do we do that? Showing progress at our board meetings, we're maintaining that transparency by being inclusive of stakeholders with future projects. The example would be meeting with, we're talking about developing and building classrooms, let's meet with our art teachers to get feedback from them on what that should look like, or we're working on a beer bomb library, we're meeting with our librarians, those experts that work in those rooms, or athletic department for field work, things like that. That's how we are being inclusive of those stakeholders. And real-time updates to the Board, as you noticed, this year we have them. Responding to workforce shortages, we're really trying to examine our staff recruitment and retention, been a part of a great committee that we developed this year, streamlining our hiring processes. This is, obviously, we've talked about the difficulties in hiring and finding top-quality teachers for our schools, so some of the things that we're doing to be effective in that process are examining our panorama survey questions. So, it's feedback that we get in our surveys from our staff, where we, we're looking at those questions, and actually, we're trying to identify gaps, areas of improvement, are our questions directly aligned to the information that we're trying to get, and then taking action on it. Are we doing what we say that we're doing? Also, revising staff exit surveys, so as our staff exit, why are they exiting? Are they ret... Are they retiring? Are they resigning for another district? Are they looking for a different job in a different area, things like that? So, revising those exit surveys, another example, we have a partnership with DESI to grow your own. It's essentially, as we've worked with DESI on scholarship identification in using maybe a graduate, a student of ours that we're taking to build, I'll use an EL teacher, a student that is proficient in Bosnian or a refugee that then maybe becoming an EL teacher and how we could identify those graduates in becoming one of our own employees in our district. Job fairs, you've seen some of those postings. We've been doing those, targeting specific classified departments. Also, obviously, ongoing is trying to increase our substitute teacher workforce. That's something that we cannot stop doing and dividing and trying to really reach out to find more substitutes that can work in our classrooms with our kids. And then finally, something that we have been doing, and you'll notice, I think I had one go out today, but essentially, that early identification, we have teaching positions that we are anticipating or have found through this process of retirements and resignations. As we are learning of these positions, instead of waiting, we are looking at those positions, trying to determine whether or not and how that position would look for next year. And you're seeing postings already. It's January, and we're beginning the process of hiring for the 23, 24 school district, our school year. I've been in the district for 27-ish years, and I would say every year, we have gotten closer and closer to the point we've never hired for the following year at this point in the year. Trying to get the best candidates that we can, and we refine the process to make sure that we can do. Cyclical investments, that's another example. The roof work that was done Oakville this summer, these are just some of the highlights. The HVAC improvement at John Kerry this summer, additional cameras that were being installed at Melville High School, Washington Middle School, Oakville Middle, and as well as some of the ones that we're adding this summer. Ongoing that asphalt and concrete throughout the district, board approval of new buses, as you realized in December as well as now. Kitchen serving units that are, were approved this evening as well. Those are all examples of what those cyclical investments in our infrastructure look like. Responding to learning needs through, you hear the word MTSS. Dr. or Mr. Smith in our Student Services Department has been instrumental in MTSS in our buildings. It's shown problem-solving approach for that continuous improvement. I've had a lot of people use that word. I hate to use the word, you know, try new things and, but this is something that we've sort of fine-tuned. We hear positive results, finally, from buildings saying that this strategy or this implementation of MTSS is working. We're finding the, you know, these established teams in the meeting. When I'm talking to teachers and walking through the schools, listening and reporting from our principals, you'll hear probably tonight, mention of that from our instrumental leaders at Beasley as well as Beerbomb. We've got that continued focus on that tier one, that guaranteed viable general. Another visual representation of how we're building capacity, another example of how we're being effective and efficient with our work. And finally, what are some examples of some celebrations that we've been making some impact? Learning, Learning 2025 this past November focuses on culture components. AAS A looks for districts who focus on the whole learner, empowering all learners and providing future-driven educational opportunities. So, through that process, the district was recognized as one of the, also being a lighthouse district, the national lighthouse district during this cycle of application. Two great examples of that. Also, acceptance into the League of Innovative Schools. That has been something that we've been very proud of, and you'll be hearing more about that work. That's funded by our U.S. Department of Education. Another example, our Success Ready Network, Dr. Kenoey's recognition. Just a small example, I, we were talking about this. I think it's the first time we've had a building principal of ours being recognized as a Regional Missouri Principal of the Year. So, these are just small examples of how we are making impact in the, in our Effective and Efficient arena. And then also, we celebrate with our Melville mentions, thanks to our communications department. We, listen, teachers want to be recognized for their work and known. And we've had the opportunity to spend a couple times a week, sometimes we try one and try to find schedules to be able to get into our classrooms. This is one of the most positive celebratory times that I would say that we've had this year, when going into classrooms, surprising teachers, staff members, custodial staff, all departments certified as well as classified staff. Here are examples of what you're doing for us that we are appreciating, or someone has nominated you for a mention, what we can do. So, these are just a few of those great examples. Have anything else in regards to Effective and Efficient? Just want to give you a brief update of some examples of how we're reaching that goal.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any question?
I do have a, I have a question.
Sure.
When you were speaking about refining the exit interview, is that something that's been completed or you're still in the process of?
So, results of an exit survey, honestly, if we gave results of an exit survey, we couldn't really tell you what, how accurate that information is.
Yeah.
When we have teachers exit or employees exit, we can't tell you from the past how many teachers actually completed that survey or how that survey was completed to give us actual real information from our employees. If we took that survey information and we got it back from five, it's very different than if we make sure that we are trying to reach out to every single solitary teacher that's exiting. So, that is something, and Dr. Pike is not here, but I give her all the credit. She has put a lot of time into making sure that this year will be that first year that we really take exit survey data
Got it.
and make decisions, listening to our amazing staff that leave for various reasons for future. What we get, what can we do to retain staff, and does it give us information that maybe we didn't have?
That's great. Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
All right. Good. Thank you very much. Next up is policy revisions, and I don't know who's doing that. Dr. De Kemper, Dr. Gaines, Dr.?
I will, but there's not much there, really. Most of these are, pretty much all of these are precipitated by changes in the law. But we'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
I think questions are already posted on e-boards that everybody had. Anybody else? Okay. If I could please get a motion to approve policy revisions as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, now, Dr. De Kemper is up with Prop S updates.
Good evening. Our Prop S implementation team has continued to meet on a regular basis. We've met as recently as this morning. And so, after consulting our architects, our building leaders, our stakeholders, and watching the progress of our contractors, we feel competent in adding some green checks to our list because that represents significant completion of our contracted work. Now, there are details that I'll go into, but we are in a good place with our projects now. At Beerbomb Elementary, work continued over the break. A lot of work continued. The exterior masonry will conclude this week. Last week, there was a plumbing inspection that passed. That's always good news. So, now tile work can begin, and the exterior windows are scheduled to begin as early as 2:23. I had to borrow a picture from Beerbomb because our facilities team has inserted plexiglass windows at both Blades and Beerbomb so that students can look in and see the construction happening in real time. So, thank you to Beerbomb for that. Blades Elementary, again, work continued over the break. The cabinetry and HVAC is expected soon. I think there was one small unit that was to arrive tomorrow for the remaining HVAC, and there was concrete and steelwork taking place today when I was there. And we were able to complete a punch list on the faculty restrooms that have been installed. And that's always popular within a school when you can add restrooms. So, good news at Blades Elementary. At Bernard Middle School, this is a recent, from this week, picture of their security vestibule. I think it looks fantastic. We do have roller shades that will be installed in February, but the vestibule is operational. And so, our team will add a second buzzer. That's been an evolution of thought as we've gone through our projects in talking to the people who are using this space. They've added, or they've requested a second buzzer, so we will be doing that. And we will also be adding targeted safety film in this vestibule as well as the other completed vestibule. And so, Bernard has also ordered some new furniture. I think it's scheduled to arrive as early as next week, if I recall Dr. Cumming correctly. And so, that is when they will officially occupy that space, but it is operational. Oakville Elementary is operational. There's Wendy Bus working away at her desk, and safety film again will be installed in February. We'll once again add a second buzzer, and there will be new furniture arriving shortly. Rogers Elementary, you've seen this photo before. They continue to use the vestibule successfully. We're also adding safety film there. We do have one parking lot light that was damaged as it was brought in, so that is being replaced. And then sod was scheduled to be placed this week. That's a minor detail, but we're watching temperature for that. And temperature and weather will really dictate the pace of completion at the Melville High School ball field. Castle expects to finish their work soon, and they want to begin laser grading February. I believe they said they would laser grade it 12 times. And then potential completion in early May, but it depends on if we keep getting hit with periods of wet weather or not. So, we've made some adjustments to our upcoming bids. We're talking to a lot of people, as Dr. Bressler mentioned. We're meeting with, you know, the teachers who will be occupying spaces, the building leaders, so that they have a voice in it. And we're continuing to refine plans. We expect to go on the market with Beerbomb Phase Two in February. In March, we'll look at the entrances of Hegement Point and Trout Line. In May, we still intend to go to the market for Washington Middle School. Then Berkeley, John Kerry, and Berkeley should go to the market live. Thank you to Marshall for updating the finances, keeping us in know on a regular basis. I appreciate your time tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you. Dr. Freeman, oh, thanks. I'm struggling tonight, so bear with me. The safety film is in all of the vestibules only in our schools? Is that the only place we're installing it?
Um, we are installing it in vestibules and other targeted locations.
Okay. That's good enough for me. Thank you.
So, the second buzzer, can you just clarify exactly, is that an interior buzzer for the staff to answer or is it an exterior buzzer for someone to buzz themselves in?
It'll be an exterior buzzer as you buzz into the first set of doors. Then to actually proceed into the office space, there will be another buzzer system.
So, it makes it essentially man-trap-ish, so that way you have to buzz in twice. So, you can't just make your way in because that door is accessible.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is the ballot issue. Dr. Gaines.
Well, good evening. You know, we've been asking kind of this broad, general question or, you know, what kind of district does the community want as we look out over the next seven to 12 years, knowing that the current strategic plan goes for another few. And so, we've long shown possibilities kind of out into the future with our strategic planning grid. But as far back as May of '21 is when we first really talked about with these ESER positions that if we were going to fund them beyond FY '24, that a levy would be needed to continue that support. Kind of came back in June, started talking about that again, and had deeper conversations throughout the fall culminating with salary data and community survey data that was presented in December and along with that having taken place after a conversation amongst the finance committee. So, we looked across all of those operating levy needs. All of that adds up to somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 cents when we look at how we would escalate those into potentially next year. We've also shown what the generic kind of ballot language has to look like per the statute. Survey data that we did and provided in December showed just over 51% support at 30 cents. But as we got higher than that, we started to see a drop-off in community support. We also kind of had laid across dimensions at the levies required for different pieces, what the favorability of doing that item on a survey was, and then what the levy favorability was for those based on just those single item levy amounts. When we put them all together, we dropped down considerably. You can see to about 17%. So, if we think about the last two ballot issues where we had done survey work before going to the ballot, you see in both of those, we started at a pretty good position going in. And with advocacy, we were able to raise those voter approval ratings and get positive results in the last two elections. So, when we kind of break that out, kind of in pieces and favorabilities and those things that we didn't ask for, our highest favorability was on the salary piece, followed by maintaining the interventionist. So, the rough plan that we had lined out after conversation with the finance committee was to go to the ballot with, for salaries in April of '23, likely in April of '24, going to the voters to maintain the ESER positions. However, could go as early as this November to do that in 2025, coming back with what would likely be somewhere around a $14 million bond issue that would not necessitate a change to the tax rate or an increase to the tax rate. And then in April of '26, extending Prop A as a 4-cent capital levy for HVAC and roofing. And then out in that 29 or 30 range, looking at a significantly sized bond issue with potentially having an increase with that. And so, from that, we worked with legal and developed ballot language on e-board. We have ballot language in 2-cent increments, starting at 27 cents and going up to 35. The language is the same, only the numbers have changed. And then we've not really done anything with a proposition letter or number to kind of name that proposition. As we look at all of this, what we see are the salary calculations that were provided in December are for the current year and don't really account for what districts might do into next year or beyond that. We also had introduced the concept of perhaps operational safety items as something that could be added. When we provided that in December, we really didn't provide a level of pennies there, though. But that could include a number of things, everything from the safety film that Dr. De Kemper talked about to other things that are in our strategic plans, such as updated locks, updated keys, keypad entrances, fencing door, exterior doors. We kind of have a plan for security cameras, but we could accelerate that. So, as I mentioned, we've included resolutions at different amounts for your consideration. We know, you know, if we look at what it costs at different market values, you look at that, at what that costs annually, so depending, you know, at the 27-cent amount, depending on home prices, anywhere from, you know, around $130 to $260 at the high-end amount, anywhere from $170 to roughly $340. When you break that down on a monthly or daily cost, you know, we're looking at, from the low end, anywhere from about $11 a month up to, on the high end, at the high amount, higher levy, up to about $20. higher levy, up to about $28 a month. Or anywhere from about 35 to about 91 cents a day is how that would impact taxpayers. So the deadline to get something on the April 4th ballot is next week, January 24th. We have to get it to the county by then in order to have the funding for next school year. So we really need kind of two decisions before we, or two kind of consensus level of decisions before we would ask to formally adopt a resolution tonight. One is deciding the pennies at which we would ask, and the second one being a proposition letter or number. We've internally, we've kind of bantered around two, around E and M, and our communications department prefers Prop M. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but we need to get to what number and what letter.
Well, should we get the easy one out of the way? The letter?
Say we go M. Make that the easy part.
I'm good with M. Anybody else?
With what, sir?
The letter that we're going to use for the proposition.
Oh, sure.
That's the easy one.
Sounds good.
Scott?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll do one motion at the end after we discuss the hard part.
It's not hard.
All right, well, who wants to start? We'll take turn. No, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, since obviously we look at, you know, different phases of this, and we've heard from people here tonight, and we've had emails come in about, obviously retaining ESER staff is definitely a high point that's come up in the last couple of weeks, and it's obviously been discussed before. But obviously, we've done surveying and we've seen that 30 cents seems to be that we can guarantee that the cut, the district has said, we're fine with spending this money. We've also looked at Prop R and Prop S polling, and they've been 12 to 14% conservative on what they came in at versus when we actually went to the ballot box. So obviously, we've discussed that number as well of doing everything that we prefer with ESER and staff funding to be about a 49 cent number, which we know has not been one that the public has liked. So either we need to find a number that works best and take our chances on the percentages, or we split it in two different spots. But if I remember correctly, isn't August an option this year for a ballot scenario?
Yes, a decision for August would be have to made, have to be made in June.
Okay, so we have August and September, August and November of this year, and then April of next year before the funding falls out. And which would be a preferable cutoff point for that decision to be made by November of this year to make sure that the funding is locked in for next year?
There's, so anything, if we put something on the April ballot, this April, and it passes, we receive the revenue next school year. If we put something on the August ballot and it passes, we would receive that revenue next school year. Part of the conversation, especially with the finance committee around the ESER interventionists and the other ESER funded pieces, it was, in terms of stewardship of tax dollars, we don't need that revenue next year. We have those positions and activities funded for FY '24. So potentially, we would be taxing well above what we actually needed. So that was one of the concerns of the finance committee of doing it in a way where we had those funds for next year.
I, I just, I need a little clarification. The ESER funds from the government can only be used for interventionists or can be used for other things?
No, they can be used for other things.
As I thought. So then why couldn't we shift what we're doing with those ESER funds and go ahead and ask for all of this? You know, I'm, I'm thinking one ask every two years would be better than one ask every year. That's just my opinion. And I'm thinking 33 and 23 sounds like a really good slogan. So I mean, get it and get it done. Use the funds that we get from the, if, if we're fortunate enough to have it passed for ESER funding, I mean for interventionist funding, and use the other funds for something we would have used that other portion for.
Can you do that?
So while 33 and 23 sounds good as a slogan, the reality is to fund all the interventionists, we need 40.
Oh, well, it was a great idea while it lasted.
I mean, is that, is that even on the table as an option, that you could submit to change what you're planning to spend the money on?
We would have to give DESI approval because our ES, our ESER spending plan is, has been submitted and approved to DESI. So any changes, we have to get approval through them. And the guy that's done all of that and has really worked with us and kind of lauded us, you know, among other districts of how we're, how our money is really focused on learning recovery pieces that kind of fit that mold, he's retiring. And so we would be dealing with someone else to try to get those approvals who's new in that position. So yes, can be done. It's just a lot of stuff on the backend. And it's significant, it's a significant amount of money to re-prioritize and calculate. So if you're looking at about, you know, probably 2.3 to 2.4 million of being able to, how we might push that around.
It was just a thought because I, like I said, I, I-
You're not the only one that said that thought.
Oh, okay, well, that's comforting.
No, we've all had this thought about how to spend, where to put the penny, where they need to go.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask for clarification on how the ballot language would look and if, in fact, we could ask for approval for a portion of it to not be collected until the money runs out instead?
We don't have that language at all.
Okay.
Based on our conversations last month-
Yep.
-we didn't have the attorneys prepare that, that kind of language, because it gets a lot more-
Really messy.
-complicated of how you phase in levy, part of it one year, part of it after that. And there's some weird mechanics in kind of how that can be possible. It, it just gets, it's more complicated on the ballot side, it's more complicated when we go to set the tax rate to.
I think it's worth, worth the trouble, though. I really do. No matter how much trouble it is in the next four days, I think it'd be worth to look into.
Can you expand on your thought?
So it is trouble to do it, but we have the support right now, you know, and we have the dollars. So in 2023, we would collect 27 cents for salaries. And then in the ballot language, we would put in there, you know, in 2025, we would start collecting for salaries for the ESER, the interventionists and their needs. And that would be 21 cents, I believe, at this time. I think that's what it said in there.
13, I think.
So it depends on what, what you're asking for.
Right.
Right?
To just keep the teachers.
So if it's just the interventionists, it's an additional 13. If it's everything else, it's an additional 21.
Right, okay, so I'm saying 21.
It's 13 for the interventionist, seven for the supports, and then another penny for the data supports.
I don't know if I'm the only-
But I, I can't guarantee that I can even get ballot language by Monday in that, because that will take significant research for them to do. Because it's not, it's uncommon.
I also feel that that really muddies the water when trying to advertise something. I, I have like made my position pretty clear in the past that I feel that this one is always picking two, right? If you go big on the first one, that sets what happens on the next one, regardless of what it may be. If we go for 27 now, that means it's 13 or 20 next time. I feel in my heart, like, we don't know if we can do this yet, but like if we did do that, and I understand, the support is there in terms of survey data of people saying they like it, but the survey data is also extremely clear that if you click it back to where it says 40 cents, it is no longer there. And that is what we would be asking. People are going to add those numbers together, and we're at 30% instead of 51. And like, I understand, between 30 and 40, where is that at? We historically outperform survey data, but if you add it together-
We can't say 30% because if you add somebody who's, is good at 40%, they're, they're going to be good at the 49, so it's actually 47% of people with support a 40 cent increase.
No.
No.
Why not?
It's because the 17 dips down to all other levels, right?
Yeah, we had 17 support at 49, we have 30 at 40, 51 at 40. It's not adding. That's at each level, that's our level of support.
And going off Prop R and Prop S, we, again, we outperformed by about 13 to 14% on what we surveyed at when we actually went to the ballot box. So if you look at that data, that wouldn't get us quite to 50%.
And, and-
That's a wrinkle.
I mean, Prop S was a tax increase. It was a no-tax increase.
Right, it was a bond.
Right? So that does, that might make this a little bit different. And it also went to things, physical things people can see versus this, which I just wonder if it would skew the cushion that we saw.
Right. But then you look at Prop R, Prop R was also a tax increase, and it outperformed by advocacy and, and heavy community involvement from the Prop R committee. So I mean, you can look at that data and say, we're not going to pass 40 cents. We're going to pass 30, and that should just make it over the line. You throw the percentages, then you probably could get to 34, maybe 35, and then that's when that, how good is your survey of a performance versus your data going to be?
So, go ahead.
What, what margin of approval do we need on this?
50% plus one.
How much, 50 plus one?
Yes.
Um, it, it's just my opinion, and I'm just, this is strictly my opinion, because the first thing around here is I'm on a fixed income, yada, yada, yada. Well, so am I. I'm on a fixed income. But if a owner of a $250,000 home can't come up with 157 bucks a year to support their community, then I don't, I don't get what, what will satisfy them.
Okay, so let's-
That would be at 33 cents.
Let's talk about the idea of putting, which we don't have the language for. I mean, the, the problem I see with that, and I think we all agreed to that at the last meeting, was that it gives the voter a reason to vote no for one or the other, right? So they might vote yes on one and no on the other, and then we lose the whole thing. So from a keep it simple standpoint and from a transparency standpoint, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, in my opinion, if we did it that way and had it both on there, or if we said, we're going to do this now, and then we're going to do the other cents the next time. It's the same concept to the voter, only it's keeping it simpler, and it is being transparent to the community that we need both of these situations to happen. The comparable salaries, bringing our, our staff, all of our staff and throughout the entire Melville School District up to where our surrounding districts are. And also, understanding how important our ESER positions and our ESER, not only the positions, the SEL interventionists, the math and reading interventionists, what they've done for our students. I mean, we absolutely want to keep those, but I think we have to listen to the voter and the survey results. The surveys were given to the frequent voter that voted in the last two or three April elections, correct? Two? Um, so I mean, I think we have to listen to the voter, be transparent about what we hope for, what we need, consider to be, continue to be fiscally conservative, but also fiscally responsible, which I think we've proven since 2015. So that's the important thing that we need to communicate to our community and ask them to support us.
I'd like to say one more thing, and I stated this eight years ago, and I got in big trouble for it, but I'm going to say it again. We are the lowest school tax in the entire region. The entire region. And if you think you don't like what the taxes are for our schools here, I challenge you to find a place where they're lower. There is none, not in this area. There is none lower than ours. And that's why we're constantly going to bat to try to get more money recently, because we skipped it for a lot of years. But now that we're trying to get even again, we need everyone's support.
Well, I think the important thing is communicating to the voter what it is we need, why we need it, what does-
And how much it's going to cost them.
Okay, let's keep this on a positive note to the voters.
That's positive.
What does SEL stand for? I mean, you know, using language that our voters can understand and communicating to them all the good things that have happened, which, you know, we had advocates here tonight to talk about it. We've gotten email after email after email. I heard my computer dinging all day and, which I will answer all of you if you're watching, but I didn't have time, sorry. But, you know, there's, there's just so much need, and these are our kids, and so I think we need to set a path of, that we will succeed at, not where we risk failing.
Sure.
We also have that unwritten thing that we're going to find out is, if we improve our school district, our property values are going to go up. So this is going to end up being a cyclical improvement in the community that we're going to finance a small bit now, and if property values go up, then that, you should be able to cover that expense when your property values go up. I mean, it's that improvement of the community that this is one piece of, and as we've said before, what kind of school district does our community want? This is one of those points where we have to figure that out.
Right. Scott?
Here's one thing I think we should note, is that the reason we are considering giving raises and keeping interventionists is because it's going to improve the quality of education that our children receive. And I think the vast majority of the public is very much interested in that. We simply are going to be able to provide the best education if we have the best teachers, if we can retain the best teachers, and if we can have specialists that are dedicated to teaching our children math and English, and also making sure that they're of well mind, social emotional learning, when they enter the classroom. So I think these are all really, really important things, and I think that's sort of the message. It is, this is really about district performance and academic performance, because this is, that's what the goal is with retaining the best educators possible. Now, I also think it's interesting to note that when you move from 30 cents to 40 cents, there's an 11% decrease in the approval. So it's literally per penny, it's almost you're taking a percentage away in terms of its chance of passing. So we know that at 30 cents, we're at 51% approval. So the only thing that's going to make a difference, if we can sort of maybe tweak those averages and improve them, is the communication that we have between now and April on, on what this is going to be used for. So, you know, my, my belief is that if we went with a number such as 33, we could give our current staff the raises that they so desperately deserve, while also maintaining at least a portion of our specialists. Now, of course, the downside to that is that as you creep up from 30 cents, you're just fighting against the, the chance that it's going to pass. So it just simply puts a really big burden on the team that's going to help bring this message to the voters. But, you know, I don't know, I don't know that there's any other way to say it, but we all want to retain all of our interventionists. We want to give our staff the most possible raise, but, you know, as it adds up, the, the community is going to be less likely to afford it as it gets more expensive.
I wanted to pop on one thing Jeff said, and I, I know this might not necessarily be popular. I do read my emails as well, I know we all do, but I'll say that out loud, like I read all the emails. At least another six months, you talk about property value, but it gives us at least another six months to get even more data and to get even more stories. And then if we have to go back, it is just six more months of positive things. Whereas I feel that we've been talking about competitive wages probably ad nauseam for years, including freezes and other things, but the interventionists came along with ESER that, that extra month, like Scott, I- Like, Scott, I, I agree with your plan, and we'll get to picking that, but that's six additional months. We got these flooded with emails, read every single one. It was very compelling to me. Part of me thinks, I understand the risk that it won't, but I'm very confident we can get it across the line, hopefully, not us, but the campaign committee. But six additional months of research may be very, very helpful in this particular scenario.
You know, we're kind of looking at a risk either way, right? So we have to assess where that risk lands moving forward now.
So if we went, this is a question for Dr. Gaines. If we were to say hypothetically that we would vote on thirty-three cents, which I was comfortable with at the very beginning of this, I was like, well, you know, given the data from Prop S and Prop R, but we have to be transparent to the community of what would we do with that extra six cents? And so would we have a plan for that? I mean, I guess you would have to see if we could shift ESER funds around and use those to pay our, some of our, at least our Title I SEL interventionists, or even, I don't know how, exactly how many SEL interventions we have, but perhaps just pay the SEL ones with those funds and shift things around, or how, is that possible? Or you don't know?
So if we go back and kind of look at the, how these kind of break down, it's, the salary piece is, you know, the twenty-seven cents, but then how do you wanna allocate the other six? Well.
When we look at what we presented last month in terms of items to maintain, it's really the interventionists, the after-school supports, the CHAD supports, and the DAS. When you look at the list here, it's not the additional ACS, it's not the supplies, and it's not the kindergarten. So how would you want to allocate that additional six cents across all of those pieces?
I'm doing funny math right now. If you calculate eight plus three plus two divided by the amount of interventionists we have, which is currently thirty-four, I understand this is a funny way of doing it, like, forty-eight percent of thirty-four, which would be the calculation, would be sixteen interventionists, sixteen point three. Obviously, we can't get a point three of a person, but so sixteen, if you are wondering what the exact calculation of what the extra six cents would be if we choose to allocate it that way, if we choose to.
Then unfortunately, we start down the path of having the Sophie's Choice of which sixteen we keep out of thirty-four. That's the problem.
It's just calculation.
So I don't agree with that. Because we would still go to the ballot box probably in the future to make up the other thirteen cents, or, you know, which would be a lot easier to pass if it was that small. I mean, this wouldn't.
That's the intent. If we're, if we're, if we're intending between this April and next April, asking for forty cents total, then we should figure out what, what, how do we think is the best way to hedge our bets and make sure that people pass? And, you know, obviously, asking for all forty cents now doesn't seem like a good plan.
No.
So it's, you know, yeah.
If I could, I, I think we should just get right to the square of it. Ask for as much as we think we can get, which we've been told is thirty cents. Go for it now and come back later for what, what we need. It's not my ideal, but it's, it seems like that's what we need to make it work.
I mean, we're, you know, the survey data says thirty.
Survey is thirty.
Says thirty. We, we know that that survey data is conservative.
And with every, like Patrick said, every penny you go up on the ask comes down the favorability of it.
Right.
Oh, Scott said that, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, we, we probably could sneak a little higher than thirty and probably have it pass. We can guarantee thirty, assuming the survey data is on the mark and is a good representative sample of the community at large. And obviously, we have a committee that has to go out and advocate for it and try and get people to understand that, but we have to get the ballot language figured out now or we're croning this to at least August, if not November.
If we ask for thirty, that means we're only asking for ten next year. So, I mean, is.
No.
No.
Nineteen.
Forty-eight cents asked over two years.
It depends at what tier of ESER we go. To be clear, there's different tiers. There's interventionists and then all of ESER. Like, after-school supports, CHADs.
Forty cents total for the, to maintain the interventionists and.
Plus the raise we would like.
Thirty-two and twenty-three sounds pretty good.
What's that?
Thirty-two and twenty-three sounds pretty good.
Thirty-three and twenty-three better.
I like that one.
Forty-nine cents is that number that gets us everything we need, and that's when we need to have that nailed down by, so we have it locked in for beyond school year, end of school year twenty-four.
Well, what's up, Tori? I'm looking for your thoughts.
Can we make a commitment to the public? We don't have to vote on it, but that we're gonna go out for, so that the interventionists
Absolutely.
Have a good feeling that.
I mean, that's.
I feel like that's the cyclical plan.
I need to establish the long-term plan, as we do with, you know, right? I agree, yeah.
And I think Jess will probably run another survey, maybe? Yes, no? Or to see.
For sure.
I just, my thought is just, we have to be smart about this with everything else that everyone said, you know, looking at the survey data, what the community has said, and be very smart about what we place in front of them, what ask we place in front of them, so that it passes. We need this win for, you know, our schools.
We need to keep our wins going. We've got two in the bank, let's go for another one.
And I don't know how much every penny risks losing that win, and we need this win.
I, I don't think it will be that penny for percent or whatever it was, because when the, the community was taking the survey, they were blind. They didn't know really what, you know, like, what the impact on their homes would be. It didn't say, you know, if your home value was this much, it would only be a hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars a year. I mean, when you see that amount.
It did have that.
It did.
It did have that? No, I guess I didn't see that.
And the other, the other thing is hypothetically, if we go to a more conservative, conservative figure than forty now, I was talking to members of the Finance Committee last night and many other nights, it was, if you ask for that dollar amount, as Kevin said during his public comment, you can show that exact dollar amount, that what that will cost for, two-hundred, two-fifty, three-hundred in show. But then next year, if you show that that is going to be less than ten dollars a month, I think it becomes far more palatable, right? That's what it would be if we, if, well, that's assuming we go for interventionists and not all of ESER, but I was crunching the numbers. It was like, what if you're only asking for blank cents next year, and then it's less than ten dollars a month for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home? I have the feeling if we go a little bit more than that twenty-seven or thirty, next year becomes significantly easier, in my opinion.
So the proposition that, or the resolution language on E-boards basically asks the voter to approve a certain sense that we will be voting on for the purposes of increasing employee salaries to become competitive in the region and to attract and retain, retain high-quality teachers and other essential workers. So that retaining piece could also fall into retaining our ESER. Our interventionist, not our ESER, but our interventionists.
Yes.
To help our students.
This, this coming calendar year, assuming we get the approval to shift the ESER funds to something else other than retaining interventionists, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes it a little messy if we say that. What, I mean, what you're.
The only way that we can do that is if we have approval, correct?
That's what Dr. Gaines just said. If we move any ESER funds around to use them for other things, like safety and security and all that.
Yeah, we'll have to have approval.
I mean, I, I don't, it doesn't seem like that language we can, we can say retain in, at this point, because we need approval, right?
Well, but you're saying it's awesome, or you're saying it's insane.
Correct. No, I agree with that, but I'm saying, if, you understand what I'm saying, if it's used to retain ESER-funded interventionists, it seems like that's.
That's not.
I would, I stick with the current, I'm like, they, I find, personally, I find them essential, but as Dr. Gaines says time and time again, the community will have to decide.
Yeah.
I find them, but I'm one guy, one vote.
And we have to bear in mind what the average voter, who the average voter is, and even though we surveyed our frequent voters, I mean, Prop R, I believe eighty-two percent of the voters were non-parents in the district, and Prop S was eighty-four percent non-parents. So we, we have to appeal to the community as a whole and at large because, and get our parents to show up.
They should care about their property values.
And obviously, some of those non-parents, parents, or people in the district that don't have kids in the district because of their parents, they could be grandkids in the district of the same people. But, yeah, we have to make sure that we're looking at the survey data and making sure we understand completely who these people are that are gonna vote for this and make sure we find the most palatable option for them.
And Jess gave that presentation, I believe. You had the actual demographics of the answers, didn't you? Yeah, we've got that.
Yeah, it's from last, last meeting, but.
But that didn't change since the Prop R.
No.
It's the same demographics, basically.
Sure.
We, the other thing is the economic impact of our community, that these people who do work here are either alumni, their parents still live here, maybe they've moved to a different area, but their kids work here now, and also, again, a lot of our staff lives in our district. So it is a positive economic impact, just as Prop S was, right? Benefiting people who actually live in our district, who may not even be parents, right? Like, I'm not a parent, but I have friends who work in the district now or other things, right? Like, the money will stay here.
Can I ask a question? Do we all know we want to ask for this, right?
Yes.
I don't think that's a question.
Why don't we go down to an amount?
Can I, um, some of the suggested or the sample supporting documents with the resolution with the different penny amounts, one is twenty-seven, and it goes up from there. Anything above twenty-seven, can we clarify, though, how, like, we, we know we have the data, we see the data for thirty. How does that then translate when we know we need twenty-seven? What's the, how, how, I guess I'm still a little bit cloudy on how we handle the three, knowing we still have ESER money. Correct. Like, if it was three, just as an example.
Right, we need a clear, we need a clearly defined path for what we'd be using those funds for by the time ESER funds expire, until the time, I mean, to see.
Does it have to be on the ballot?
No, but we, we have to be transparent to the public.
That is probably largely why this was our rough plan coming out of the Finance Committee meeting, and what we talked about last time was strictly salaries on this ballot at the penny amount that salaries need, and then come back with the full amount of all of the ESER stuff. So there isn't that clouding of pieces and overcomplications.
I don't.
Do we think that the cloudiness is a more negative aspect than a smaller ask next time? Which one is better or worse?
In my opinion, we are, we are going to still use this money in my, keep in mind, we vote on this, right? Like, I'm a dude. We would still use this money to retain high-quality teachers and other essential workers, right? I think I'm still doing that. In my mind, what I would like to spend the money on, if we did thirty or thirty-three, I still am planning, yeah, I don't feel like we're not retaining people, right?
I think we more than established, we're excellent stewards of the community's money over the last few years, and.
I mean, if we spent, you know, we ask for thirty-three, and six cents goes to some capital project, that's big murky compared to adding it into the other salary requirements and needs that we have for the other positions and other pieces of that. If you change the, change to what it goes to, that's where it gets real murky. Well, yeah.
It'll still go to operations, right? Specifically, in my opinion, staff, right? It's, we would still go there.
Of course. Right. So are you, I mean, is anybody leaning one way or the other as far as, then, again, what I kind of just said, which is, which one is the better of the two scenarios with current and then moving forward with kind of our long-range plan? What, like, Scott, what's your thought?
Uh, well, yeah. My, my thought, my, I, I, I still, I'm still just looking at the averages or the, the percentages of it passing. And if it, if we, I think twenty-nine cents was fifty-one percent.
Thirty.
Excuse me?
Thirty.
Thirty. Thirty was fifty-one percent, so thirty-one would be roughly fifty, thirty-three would be roughly forty-eight, a little less than that, and thirty-five would be a little less than forty-six. So, I mean, well, yeah, approximately.
We don't know.
I mean, I, I.
We have that past history of overperformance, so that, that's part of it.
Yeah. I mean, but what happens if it doesn't pass this year? If it doesn't pass this year, what exactly are we gonna do next year?
Well, October.
Actually, I think, no, but, no, seriously, here's the thing, if you think about it, if, if, if we don't pass it this year, then I don't think we can actually go back and ask for raises and keep the interventionists next year.
Well, then you can kiss the district goodbye.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, yeah.
We're not kissing the district goodbye.
No, we're, we're, that's why we're having this conversation, so we can arrive at a really smart decision.
Let's do positive.
And let's not say kiss the district goodbye.
Yeah.
Exactly. We don't wanna do that. So why wouldn't we now?
I didn't say that out loud.
We have, we have to place something in front of the public that makes sense.
If we, if we, so we've had a lot of success through many ways of measuring district performance. If we hedge our bets and we go on the lower side of things, I know I just said thirty-three before, if we went somewhere around thirty-one, we're gonna hedge our bets on this passing, we'll continue to show hopefully academic performance, fiscal responsibility throughout the next year, and just build on this momentum, and then hopefully we can go back to the voters, and they'll see what we've done over the last several years, especially post-pandemic, and they'll know how serious we are about providing the best academic environment for our students. So, like, if we, if we swing a little bit on the conservative side on this, where we think we've really got a good chance of passing, that might actually be doing us a favor here.
Dr. Gaines, just to make sure that anything we do for either April, August, or November of this year is collected next school year, correct?
November would not.
Okay.
November, if we put something on the November twenty-three ballot, that vote is after we've already set the tax rate for next year.
Right, because that's in September.
So it would not be available until the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which is the first year that we need the fund.
So April of next year, or November of this year, are essentially the same collection window?
Correct.
Because it's after the tax rate has been set in late September.
Correct.
Okay.
The advantage to the November would be that our ESER-funded positions would know that, that they would still have their positions. I mean, that's the, the, the part that I don't like in terms of our staff, is leaving them hanging, not knowing if they will have, have a funded position.
It creates a level of budget certainty earlier in the budget planning cycle for FY twenty-five.
If we did November.
Right, did November versus April. Plus, you also, you know, might, it's an odd year for elections, so it's not like we'd get the enhanced participation because it's not, it's not a presidential one.
And it's still fifty plus one?
Can I say something real quick? To the interventionists that are here, I want you guys to know that we really super appreciate all of the hard work you guys are doing. We know that you're making a difference. We are committed to trying to find a way for us to be able to afford you. Clearly, all of us want that. We want what's, what's best for the students, and we believe that's maintaining you. So we're gonna do the best we can.
Um, uh, isn't it still technically conservative? Isn't it still technically conservative if we went thirty cents or more than twenty-seven because it's above fifty-one? That's still conservative, right?
Yeah.
We agree? Right, hypothetically?
Well, because of the data, the voter and the.
Right.
That is still conservative.
I mean, we could probably go higher. Would I feel comfortable doing it? No, because we're making an assumption on how well that data overperforms by advocacy. We've got proof that its thirty will work because of what we've had for a survey. I say if we go above that, it gets into uncertain territory.
But it's over twenty cents.
Correct.
Every penny's quarter of a million dollars, is that right?
Like, like, two-twenty-something?
Not quite.
About two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. So if we go thirty now, and then we ask for twenty?
We don't, so we, not that it makes a difference, but we don't, we don't have a thirty cent, we've got twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one prepared. Not that it makes a huge difference, but thirty-one.
We can have a thirty cent printed out, probably about thirty seconds.
All right, is that, was anyone going above thirty, or are we committing to that now, or?
I can.
It's just, it's just changing the number, that's, that's not changing the language.
But we have to task our administrators with coming up with an extremely solid plan for what we're going to do with those extra pennies.
Extra four cents.
So that we can, as we communicate to the voter, that, so that we, and, and I mean, we will use it wisely and responsibly and.
As we have.
The bottom line is it's going to go to academic performance. That's the bottom line. I think that's what most people care about, is overall performance of the district, specifically fiscal and academic. And I can guarantee you that retaining teachers and affording interventionists is adding to the academic performance of the school. There's no doubt about that.
And also all of our other employees, because.
Absolutely.
As we.
It takes everyone.
Yes.
Yeah, this is, this is a combined effort for everybody, because everybody has to work together to meet every student where they are and help them excel. The, the interventionists have been an invaluable part of that, but it's a, it's a relationship between the interventionists and the teachers and the administrators and everybody working through this. We have to address it as best we can with the resources we have and in the best manner that the voters, we are their, we are the stewards of the taxpayer money, to do it in the best way that we think they will agree with. It's, it's tricky, but it's what we're here to do, it's what we volunteered to do.
Okay, so.
Make a motion?
Go ahead, no, so, so here's, we're going to actually follow Robert's rules for this. If Jean makes the motion for a certain sense, and the motion has to also include, or you can tell me what it is and I'll make the motion if you want, and you can, then we will give each member an opportunity to debate that, and we will change it as we see the majority leaning, so that, so that that motion can stay alive and then, and we can pass it once we get a, once we all.
A consensus of some kind.
Yeah, consensus. Is that fine?
I'm good.
All right, so what's cents?
May I go now?
Yeah.
Is it time?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to put Prop to be named later.
No.
Prop M.
That's hard to add.
Prop M.
M is a no, Bill.
So Prop M on the ballot at thirty-one cents.
Second.
Anybody have any debate?
We're going to go in an order?
Well, uh, do you have, you second, are you?
I second it, I think thirty-one cents is a good total.
Okay, Jeff?
I think going higher than thirty gets into danger territory. Thirty-one is probably fine. I would say that if I wanted to bet on this, but I'm betting with other people's money, so I'm not doing that, I think thirty-one should be a solid win and we should be able to take that over the finish line. Going higher than thirty-one cents, you start making some assumptions of how people are going to want to go ahead and have their money spent. I think I'm good with thirty cents and good with thirty-one cents as well.
Thank you. Tori?
Um, I sit at thirty.
Okay.
Because it's been lined out in our survey, it is over the twenty-seven cents already. I know it's just a penny, but I want this win for our district so that we can continue to do all of the things that, you know, Scott spoke of, you know, Patrick, proving ourselves, making a case for what is to come beyond that and get another, you know, get another win. And I, I don't know if a penny is worth it right now to risk that. That's why I sit at thirty.
Grace?
I'm going to go with the thirty-one because that's just three cents closer to the twelve we need to keep the interventionists later. So as much as we can do, I, I want to pull for that.
Okay, Patrick?
Thirty-one is my choice.
So we have a motion, a second, and a majority at thirty-one. So, all right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero for Prop M on the ballot at thirty-one cents. Okay. And I echo, thank you, Dr. Gaines, and, and interventionists and all staff. You, you know why we're up here, I hope. So, we're trying. Thank you. Okay, next up is the best part of the night, Beasley Elementary.
All right, so first of all, I wanted to commend my wonderful staff and parents who have stayed this evening, so that shows their commitment to this process as well. Hello, I am Andrea Dean. I'm the proud principal of Beasley Elementary School, where our motto is "Working Together for Every Child Every Day." This is Beasley's enrollment over the thirteen years that I have been principal there. You can see the drop in student population after redistricting. So who exactly attends Beasley? Approximately eight percent more males than females. We're at three-point-one-five gifted students, which, which equates to ten students. Four-point-one-four percent students in transition, with an increase in unaccompanied minors, which means students not living with their, with either parent. We're at nineteen-point-five-six percent of students receiving special education services. And we've also seen an increase of our English language development students at seventeen-point-oh-three percent. This year, our free and reduced lunch is at forty-six-point-eight-two percent, which is a little bit lower than Beasley has been the last couple of years. We've been closer to fifty percent before we had the free universal breakfast and lunch given by the federal government. This shows our demographics by ethnicity. Beasley has four improvement, school improvement goals, which guide our work, focusing on reading, math, multi-tiered systems of support, and building that sense of community and belonging. At this time, students are currently taking the middle-of-the-year I-Ready benchmark. This graph shows you where Beasley students started in reading this fall. This is the beginning-of-the-year view. Seventy-four percent of our students were emerging, which means they were within the grade level below. So if they were a second grader, then they were in that first grade level at least, or they were on or above grade level. Seventy-four percent may sound high, but unfortunately, we were the lowest in the district. This means that twenty-six percent of our students were two or more levels below, or not ready to start working on the current grade level standards. We have the highest percentage of students scoring in yellow, which means two or more levels below, and the third-highest percentage of students scoring in red, which is three or more levels below. Many Beasley students so, show a significant summer slide when we assess in the fall, which indicates the importance of summer school for our students. Our students have to show consistency, grit, and determination to make typical and stretch growth on the I-Ready assessment, and so do our teachers. This chart shows the twenty-one, twenty-two reading growth overall. I wanted you to be able to see a whole-year picture. Then it's also broken down by grade level. All the grade levels are from the beginning of the year until the end of the year, except for kindergarten. Last year, kindergarten took the initial in January, and then they took the final in May. All grade levels show growth, but the totals are not where we would like them to be. Of course, we would like to see eighty percent or more in the green at the end of the school year, but we celebrate each one of those steps towards that. This is our math I-Ready data this fall. Our math was not as low as reading, our students didn't have as much of a slide or came in a little more prepared, but we were still the third-lowest with quarter of students ready for the upcoming grade level standards. Twenty-three percent of our students were two or more grade levels below, and we had the third-highest percentage in red. Our twenty-one, twenty-two math data shows growth, again, by each grade level over time. When our students stay at Beasley, they're always learning and growing. This is our math data. As you can see, the state average is in blue, the orange is the district average, and the gray is Beasley. It's for the last two years of math testing, twenty-one and twenty-two. In two thousand twenty-two, our third-grade proficient and advanced, scoring proficient and advanced was the fourth-highest in the district and above the state average. Students continue to show growth each year. Our third-grade math is a concern that we have been addressing through a school-wide math plan, and our students, we notice our students are lacking number cents and have fragmented skills. This is our fourth-grade math data for proficient and advanced, same color schemes. On ELA, which is English Language Arts, we were the fifth-highest in the district and above the state average. Math, again, is a concern that we have been addressing. In fifth grade, our ELA was not where we wanted it to be, and we have looked into a lot of the standards, and what we have found that the majority of our students can read at grade level, but the text complexity, the vocabulary, and the application of skills can be difficult without support. And as you know, the map test is, is individualized, they take it on their own with no support. Our math is a celebration. We had the third-highest math scores in the district and, again, above state average. That goes to show, again, that development of skills over time. Our students not, might not be ready in third grade or fourth grade, but they continue to learn and grow, and they were spectacular in fifth grade. These are our office referrals. We've had a drop in our school-wide, our office referrals since our school-wide focus on social-emotional learning, which is evident in the next slides. This is our panoramic data, and we have many celebrations, but we are especially proud of our teachers' self-reflection and collective efficacy. Our teachers have been studying professional learning about equity and feel confident. They're always improving and always growing. Our areas for growth are focusing on the belonging, that's one of our goals in our school improvement plan, and our resources for students. Even though the board has added a lot of resources, that is still our greatest need according to our staff survey. These are our after-school opportunities. We have eighty-one students participating in the Esser tutoring after school in reading and math. And we, for the first time, we have nine students that will be going on the Tremont trip in March. That's a first time for Beasley. We're very proud of that. And part of that has been, of course, parents paying, but we've also had some fundraising opportunities and donations from the public, great public support. These are our wonderfully talented and hard-working interventionists, and the next slide shows where they're making that impact and the difference with our students. If it doesn't have, like, a certain number of times per week, that means they're in there daily, sometimes throughout the whole reading or math block. These are some of our Tier One highlights. We have really been working on science of reading, our math numbers sense, and continuing zones school-wide since two thousand seventeen. And of course, participating in homeworks. Homework consists of, this is our fifth year with homeworks, and it consists of a family dinner, home visits, and parent workshops. We had such positive feedback about parent workshops, a hundred percent found it extremely useful or very useful, so much so that in the fall of two thousand twenty-one, we had a hundred and sixty-two participants, and in the fall of two thousand twenty-two, we increased that to three hundred and nineteen participants. This is a big commitment from our teaching staff and our parents. These are some of our Tier Two highlights. One of the things I want to highlight is that we have an MTSS kindergarten pilot going on right now at that Tier Two level, following a teaching and assessing cycle. Our kindergarten second and fourth grade reading specialists are also following our data and pushing into classrooms for Tier Two supports, while also continuing to provide the Tier Three pullout services that they've always provided. These are some of our Tier Three focuses. One of the highlights at Beasley is our social-emotional learning curriculum. It is strong and varied to meet all the students' needs, and it's not just our social-emotional learning interventionists, it is all staff. We even have a vibroacoustic ball pit that's shown in that picture, and we do B3, which some of the board members had asked about, the body, the brain-body behavior, which is a body research fundamental motor skills that spark the brain, build the body, and improve the behavior. This is some of our recent parent survey data from each year. I sent out a parent survey, and this is some of the survey, and it just goes to show that Beasley school climate is a culture of relationships, open communication, trust, and mutual respect. We are partners. We are partners with our families and working together for every child every day. Thank you for listening and for your continued support.
Thank you very much. Your presentation and numbers are just amazing, and I highly recommend anybody that's interested in more details on this, go to E-Boards, because she gave some excellent, I, I have to dive in a little deeper, I was at work when it came out, and, so, but I was really, I even texted Tori, I said, "Holy cow, wait till you see this response, it's really impressive." So that, it was all great information, thank you very much.
It's even better in action, so.
Yeah.
We just had a behavior specialist from Cahokia visit our school to look at our SEO program, so we, we welcome, that's a great way, you know, for people to see what's going on, is to come in and visit in the schools. We welcome that. One of the things that person said was, "It's just a part of our DNA." Everyone, the students, the staff, it's just what we do.
Yes, very impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Beerbomb Elementary, Paul Morris.
Good evening, and thanks for having me tonight. I'm looking forward to telling you about all the learning and growing that's happening at Beerbomb. So I, you know, I've used this phrase before, the Beerbomb Renaissance, we're in the middle of it, man. I, I, I've been at Beerbomb now for seven years, and we've never had such high levels of engagement, whether that's our students, our parents, our community. Our families love to be part of it, and so I'm, again, just thank you for letting me tell you a little bit about it tonight. Our enrollment and our demographics, so this just kind of shows how our building has shrank and grown over time, that twenty-sixteen-seventeen school year, right before redistricting, after redistricting, we started to trend downward and kind of bottomed out, that two thousand twenty-one, that COVID school year, but now we're kind of on that steady rise again, hence the need for all the construction at Beerbomb. You know, we, we've talked about the uniqueness of our demographic before, you know, high number of students on free and reduced lunch, high number of multilanguage learners, but one thing I wanted to highlight this time was, you know, because of all that diversity, we also have a number of students who fit more than one of those subgroups. That biggest, kind of those, that biggest group of students that kind of checked more than one box are those students that are both free and reduced and multilanguage learners, which creates some challenges, as does this. So I, I've shared this before, I don't think I shared it last year, but, you know, one thing that we see just because of where we're located is the trans latency of our families. So in the first column here, you can see the number of students in each of these grade levels that started the school year. in each of these grade levels that started the school year due to Beerbomb in that particular grade level. No number in kindergarten, because all those kids are new, and then you can see the number of students we've added, um, throughout the course of the year. But I added some notes at the bottom because I think this is just also one of those, um, celebrations of Beerbomb. Uh, over the course of this school year, we've added fifteen students who are new to the United States. Their first school experience is at Beerbomb. Um, I mentioned that twenty-twenty-one school year where our enrollment kind of, um, hit that, uh, valley. Uh, I don't think any elementary school had more students take part in the Melville-at-Home program, um, you know, and we are still seeing some students that are returning to our building from that program. We're still sending students to that program. Um, so if you look, you know, in all of our grade levels, we've added a total of sixty-five students and we've dropped thirty. So there's a lot of in and outs. I know I have a couple of students who, um, started the year with us, they left, and they've since come back. So, um, that's one of those unique challenges, um, that we kind of embrace at Beerbomb, because it's just one of those other things that makes us unique. Um, I have, uh, fifty students taking part in ESAR tutoring, which is about on par with what it was last year. Um, however, I've added a couple more teachers that are helping to offer that tutoring. Um, our list of clubs and opportunities that we're able to offer our students continues to grow. Um, we're excited about all of these new opportunities, and it never fails. Um, seems like every couple months, I have a teacher come to me with a new idea for something else we can offer our kids. Um, I had, we added volleyball club this year. That was actually, I had two fourth graders stop me in the hallway one morning and say, Dr. Morris, can we talk to you? And that always kinda gives me pause. Uh, but we stepped over into the stairwell, because I was preparing for the worst, and they wanted to propose the addition of a volleyball club, and, um, I had them, uh, put together some language for an email I sent out to my teachers, and within twenty minutes, I had two teachers that were willing to sponsor it. All right, we'll talk about social-emotional learning. I feel like we've talked about that a lot tonight, um, and I'm kinda, uh, excited to share some of the growth we've had. So this is a chart that covers, uh, the last five years of survey data with our students over these different domains, and there's a lot of ups and downs, because we take this survey in the fall and we take it in the spring. And anybody that's ever worked in a school or been in a school knows that fall is very different than the spring. So you could put together a survey on just about anything, and you're gonna see a lot of peaks and valleys. So I, what I wanted to do with that is lay a trend line over it just to show kinda how that data's trending upward over time. And what it shows is our peaks are getting higher, and then when we do start to go back down into those valleys, we're not going low with each passing year. Uh, and that's translated to success with our office referrals. So I got four years' worth of data up here, but I think it's important to note that every one of these years, uh, we're under different some circumstances. That nineteen-twenty school year was my first year at Beerbomb. I was a very busy principal that year with four hundred and sixty-eight office referrals in a school year that ultimately only ended up being a hundred and twenty-nine days. Um, so we came back in the fall. Um, you know, that year looked even more different than the previous year. Um, so two school years up there that are normal, if you want, if there isn't normal anymore. Um, and we are kinda well under the pace of where we were last year, and I, you know, there's a lot that's happened in these four school years. Um, COVID obviously a factor, but also the addition of that SEL interventionist to support our SEL work. Uh, we also wanna make sure our staff feel valued. We know that we are hopefully coming out of some of the more challenging years we've ever faced in education. So I took the same approach, um, with our staff survey data to overlay a trend line just to kinda show that despite all of the challenges, we continue to trend upward. I wanna talk a little bit about our diagnostic growth, and I wanna take a little bit of a different approach, um, this time. So the way I-ready works, when our students take that first diagnostic assessment in the fall, um, the program is built out to set individual growth targets based on what grade that student's in, like, whether or not they're on grade level or they're below grade level. And so each of our students has a growth target that is tailored to them. And while, uh, I'm gonna shift into math here for a second, and while we do very much care, um, and put a lot of emphasis on the students, uh, the number of students who hit proficiency by the end of the year, we also wanna make sure to celebrate growth, because, you know, if you are a student that's two years behind, it's probably not likely that you're gonna hit proficiency in one year. That's gonna take multiple years of hitting your growth target. And so, uh, the data I wanna present to you kinda shows the number of students that hit that growth tar, target with each passing year. Um, that number continues to trend upward. Nineteen-twenty is a little, um, murky simply because we only had two data reporting cycles that year, uh, because of the closure in the spring. Um, same with reading. Um, again, here's the data with regards to how many kids are hitting proficiency by the end of the year, but here is that data and what it looks like when students hit that growth target, and we're starting to see, um, successes. And I don't have a slide for it, um, but, you know, now that we've got a couple more years of more reliable map testing data, we're starting to see the correlation between how our students are doing on the I-ready assessment, that growth, and how they're doing on the map test. So for example, um, our fifth-grade students, there was a lot to celebrate there. Um, our, the number of fifth graders who are advanced or proficient on the map test, um, for reading, uh, Beerbomb was above the district average. In fact, we were the fourth-highest in the district. Um, for math, again, above the district average, we were second-highest in the district. So that's, that's a lot to be proud of, um, at Beerbomb. I also wanna talk about kind of, uh, an overview of our MTSS work. Um, so we have done a lot of work, our staff has done a lot of work on really making sure we understand the standards that we're teaching. So those of us in the education world, um, a lot of us are big fans of John Hattie's work, who's done a lot of research on how different factors attribute to learning and growth. There's, there's, uh, I think there's ten different factors up there, and we know that all of them have an impact, but according to Hattie's work, the number-one factor is collective teacher efficacy. That's putting teachers together in teams and having them work collectively toward common goals. And so what that looks like at Beerbomb, like I said earlier, unpacking our standards. What does this standard mean? If you really start to dig into your Missouri learning standards or the Melville curriculum, we like to use a lot of educational jargon. I can take one standard, show it to ten different people, and get ten different answers as to what that means. So making sure we're having focused conversations on what these standards mean, what does proficiency look like for each of these standards, what are we gonna do when kids don't get it, what are we gonna do when kids already know it, because there's opportunity for learning there even when they already know these standards. We're looking at our tier-one universals. So, um, if you look at this slide, if I were to ask you, what's the difference between those two Gs in the big box there? Well, someone might say, one's a capital letter, one's a lowercase letter. Someone else might say, one's uppercase lowercase. One's a big G, one's a little g. And so making sure that we're having conversations around common language that we're using in our direct instruction. Uh, you know, we're not gonna go around the building and change all of the Gs to a uniform G, but we have to understand that our kids are coming to us, like I said earlier, with all kinds of different backgrounds, and making sure that we're being very intentional in our teaching. Um, and in conclusion, um, I mentioned, um, that Beerbomb Renaissance. So this is a picture from the last day of school last year, and knowing that they were gonna be ripping down the front entrance, I let our students come down and write all over the walls. It was an experience I'm sure many of them will never forget. Um, the young man on the screen, uh, he's a student that is really special to me. He's special to all of the teachers at Beerbomb, and I think he really encapsulated what it's like to be at Beerbomb in a simple message. Um, he, he loves Beerbomb, and I, you know, I could poll any one of our five hundred kids or our families or our teachers, and I think that message would generally be the same. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, as always, super proud of Beerbomb and all of your staff. Tell them, please let them know, we appreciate them very much. Okay, moving on to action items by consent. Does anybody need to poll anything? Nope. If I could please get a motion to approve action items by consent, A through F? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Uh, next is communications. We don't have anybody signed up, but I would like to give Jenna and Eric a chance to, if they have anything to share from their schools.
The new semester has begun, and there's so much excitement around Oakville. On January eleventh, eight FCCLA students, which is Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, attended regional star events. They all placed gold and will be going to state. Another exciting achievement is that three students have been named to all-state choir, and Mr. Prokowski was asked to present at the Missouri Music Educators Conference about our AP music theory program. And lastly, the theater, uh, company held auditions today for their spring play.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I've noticed that in the past meetings, a big point that's been made is, um, appreciating staff. And tomorrow at the Melville basketball game, JV, which starts at five-thirty, and varsity starts at seven, each player and cheerleader picked a teacher that they appreciate, and before the games, the players and the cheerleaders will talk out, will walk out with their chosen teacher, where they will be recognized in front of everyone there. Um, and I also believe this is, this was touched on earlier, but, um, there's a form that got sent out, and students are being asked questions like, who helped you the most, and who is there the bright in your day, and people nominated teachers and staff, and they will also be chosen, and the winners will be recognized and awarded next week. And finally, uh, DECA, an organization that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, begins its competition today. Members will demonstrate their college and career knowledge by participating in these competitive events.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. If I could get a, an authorization of closed session?
Motion in or closed session meeting for the purpose of reading a minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute, Section six-ten-zero-twenty-one, subsections one through twenty-one, and six-ten-point-zero-two-two, subsections one through six. Lease purchase or sale of real estate, section six-ten-point-zero-two-one-two. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, section six-ten-point-zero-two-one-three. And individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, section six-ten-point-zero-two-one-thirteen. Legal action, causes of action, or litigation, sections six-ten-point-zero-two-one-one.
Yes. Sorry, what? Do I have to make a motion?
Yeah.
Oops, I make a motion.
So moved, okay, can somebody second?
Second.
Oopsies.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy, yes. Jean?
Yes.
Grace? Patrick?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if I could get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
She's second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
Thirty-minute break.